Free refills?
Yeah.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special meeting of the Joshua Basin Water District. Six thirty, all right. Who would like to lead us in the pledge this evening? Deal.
I volunteer.
I've volunteered.
All in bold.
Oh, thank you. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deal. Determination of a quorum.
Madam Vice President, with Director Johnson gone, we'll do a real quick roll call. Director Reynolds?
Here.
Director Lutman?
Here.
Director Unger?
Here.
Director Hund?
Here.
You have a quorum of four, with Director Reynolds, and then excused absence. Director Johnson. Mike's here.
Do I have to go?
You guys know what I mean. You have to go sit down there.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
I would like to add something to it. There wasn't a place to put, like, director's comments and future meetings and all that. I guess after the return from office session, I would like to agendize a public information legislative committee meeting on March twentieth here at ten a.m.
And the special meeting.
To get ready for Water Education Day?
It's not on the agenda, Madam Chair.
Can't amend the special meeting agenda.
I can't?
You can do it on your own. Aren't you, aren't, do you have that authority for the who's and who's?
Can I just call a meeting?
To call a meeting? You mean you're gonna call a meeting this evening?
Oh, yeah, you don't.
You can call a meeting whenever you want, but you don't have to do it within the venue of this meeting.
Oh, okay, right, okay. Never mind. All in favor of approving the agenda as it is?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. Members of the public may address the board at this time with regard to matters within the board's jurisdiction that are not listed on the agenda. State law prohibits the board of directors from discussing or taking action on items not included on the agenda. Members of the public will have the opportunity for public comment on any item listed on the agenda when it is addressed on the agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. Do I have public comment? Seeing none, I will proceed to the public hearing. At this time, the board will conduct a public hearing to receive and discuss public input and comment regarding the potential transition from an at-large election system to a district-based electric sys, election system pursuant to Elections Code, Section 10010, parentheses A, parentheses 1.
So, go ahead and open the hearing.
I'm going to open the hearing, and we're going to have a staff and consultant presentation by Jennifer from Rutan and Tucker.
Yeah, I'll start off. Tonight, my comments are actually pretty brief, but get a little bit of a break from speaking, which is exciting. We have Jeff Tilton here from National Demographics Corporation, who's gonna lead the discussion tonight. What, what we're here to do tonight, it's the first public hearing, we're here to figure out, when we go to district-based voting, what we want our districts to look like, where we want them to be, and really what Jeff is gonna be looking for is input from you and from the community, as to where our communities of interest are, what makes sense for us in terms of how to lay out those districts. Before I turn it over to Jeff, I did just wanna point out one quick typo on this exhibit one that just got handed out to you. Sorry about that, I know we've amended this a million times. If you look at the line that says March twentieth, two thousand nineteen, and in bold it says, "Hold Public Hearing Number Two, Second of Two Public Hearings," that, the last portion of that sentence that says aftermaths are drawn, just should be deleted. That's just a typo from when we're moving things around, after we changed up the schedule last, last time. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. So, is this the clicker? Okay. I know that Ms. Farrell has done a great job in preparing the board, and staff, and members of, of the community, and so, out of respect, I'm not gonna revergate essentially everything she said, but I will, I will point on some things that are, okay, there we go, I figured out how to use it. So, again, getting back to the matter at hand, this organization received a letter with respect to the California Voting Rights Act, as far as potentially being out of compliance and, and a, and potential lawsuit as it related to, to that. And essentially, in order for somebody to be out of compliance, California has made it much more, I would say easier, to be out of compliance, as compared to the Federal Voting Rights Act, in that it, California only has to fail two of the four tests, as, as you can see with respect to, does the protected class vote as a block, and do voters who are not in the protected class vote in a block to defeat the preferred candidates of the protected class? It's, it's essentially, by, by voting with an at-large process, it's, it's not that difficult to see that there's potential violations of at least one of those two under, under the California Voting Rights Act. So, that's what brings us here today, is to look to move toward districting. As Ms. Farrell talked about previously, and as, as addressed very thoroughly in your staff report, there have been numerous lawsuits over the past couple of years, resulting in millions and millions and millions of taxpayer dollars being spent to, A, defend their at-large elections, or to defend moving toward district, by district elections. At this point, the, the law changed a little bit to soften up the impact that municipalities, or governing boards, rather, feel when, with respect to lawsuit, lawsuits that are, or potential lawsuits that are being filed, and just because you have a letter now is essentially a thirty thousand dollar fee that you're gonna have to pay that, that attorney, or up to thirty thousand dollars, in addition to all the staff time and, and consultant time, to move toward by-district elections. Or you could fight it, and chances are, you will not prevail, because nobody has in California. They've settled, some of them have settled, but then as a result, they've gone, gone basically to district elections. So, that's why I come here to bring you all these good news. So, in order to, to go through this process, it's a healthy process, it's, it's one that really gets the public involved, and that's, that's outstanding, is tonight's the first of at least five public hearings. You could have more, but you should, you're to have at least five. The first two are to, for, for me to gather data from individuals in the district as to what is necessary or needed to draw particular districts. That's all I do, is gather that data. There's no map drawing whatsoever until after that second public hearing, okay? After that second public hearing, National Demographics Corporation will, will draft some maps, based on the data that you provide me, along with the census data, and we're using census data from two thousand and ten. Yes, it's two thousand and nineteen, we all understand that, but that's our reality, we have to use the census data. We will be back here again, probably two thousand twenty-one, because we will redraw districts, but probably just in slight variations. I don't know the growth over the last, or, you know, that, during that ten-year span, as it relates to the district, but there will be a time to, to redraw those maps again, to represent the districts as, as the, the demographics that fall into those, in those particular districts. So, again, the two public hearings to gather information, then there's two public hearings, at least two public hearings, to gather data with respect to the maps, the drafted maps, so we can get some information, we take that back, we take the direction back from, from the board, and, and come up with the final map. And that's, that, then you adopt it, and at this point, it looks like May first is, is the scheduled adoption date. So that's why when Ms. Farrell was talking about that error on that timeline, you, we have to have two public hearings before any map is drawn. So this represents the first. So the big thing we're looking at here is our community of interest, but I'm gonna skip through. We're looking at the census data from two thousand and ten, and we know that sixteen percent of the total population within the district is Latino, and, and we're talking about humans, okay? We're not talking about voting age, it's, it's just purely coincidental that sixteen percent are also citizens of voting age population. That rarely doesn't happen that way. But when you're looking at the total population, we're talking about humans. So the total population is nine thousand five hundred and forty-two, based on census data, okay? Then you look at citizen voting age population, it's six thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven. So we're, the reason I'm sharing that is, the districts have to be equally created, with a, with a ten percent variance. And so when you're looking at creating districts, this, again, this is what National Demographics Corporation will do, just to throw things out based on your input, is to make sure that those five districts are, have an equal number of one thousand nine hundred and eight, at least try to get to that. And then looking at, you know, the, an equal percentage of, of the, the population demographics, and also citizen voting age, population, et cetera. So it's not about taking, you know, a map and drawing lines, because it looks this way, although that could be part of it, is we're talking about the communities of interest, or do you wanna be in a school district attendance area, or, you know, something that you have knowledge of that we don't, that you're gonna inform us on, this, let's try this because of X, Y, or Z, okay? The next map, or excuse me, the map that we have, and if you're looking at your PowerPoint, it doesn't really represent, the, the printout of the PowerPoint doesn't really represent what you have on the screen, so the screen's a little bit better. There's a, I think it's yellow, sixty-five to seventy-five percent of, of the total Latino citizen voting age population, okay? So this is, we're, again, we're talking about citizen voting age population, not the, the number of Latinos, but that, you could see, or the percentage, rather, you could see where your, your concentrations are, okay, and the percentages. So when you're looking at where the demographics fall, as it relates to, again, two thousand and ten, I believe the triangles, the red triangles are where the directors live, and I, and it looks like they're schoolhouses, I don't know if those are high schools, or elementary schools, or just schools, period. See, these are the things that we don't know, that you could provide input on.
And these are the directors now, not the directors in two thousand and ten?
My assumption it's now. I, I wasn't, I didn't participate in the drawing of this particular capture of this map, so that's why I have to assume.
And Jeff, let me also mention for the, for the group and the board, that as I see it, there are four triangles on here, and I think that Director Reynolds' location is not depicted on that, so that's one of the things we need to address.
Is that the one with the flags?
No.
The one with the flag would be a school, my assumption would be a school, of sort.
Yeah.
What school was it?
The other thing that, that you'll wanna take into consideration is, you don't have to make a decision now, but when you're looking at election cycles, first of all, no one will, no one's term in office will be cut short, but whoever is up for election in two thousand and twenty, you know, that, you might wanna consider your, your districts in that, in that regard too, and then two thousand and twenty-two. So I don't know what the cycle is, if two are in two thousand and twenty, or three are in two thousand and twenty, or whatever, you'll, you'll wanna do your sequencing too. Those are some things to think about between now and, and the development of your final recommended map. But the community of interest are, again, these, these are the types of things that I wanna take back from, to hear from you, as, as we draw the maps. Like I talked about before, there could be landmarks, or schools, or tenant zones, or things that we are not knowledgeable, that you have within your community. Here's some example of, of some maps. You know, Compton, it's, you know, it's pretty much, you know, sectioned out, looking like a, you know, a preschool puzzle, or something. It's just, it's just clean sections, and the one, Glendale Unified, right next to it, very similar. If we go into, there's no really, oh, too fast here. You look at Pasadena, all the directors wanted to make sure that they touched Colorado Boulevard, the Rose Bowl, you know, so they wanted to have part of that. And so you could really be creative, I mean, you look at Central Unified, and it might be hard for you to see, but it's, it's really, you know, jogged around, and then South Pass is, is a fairly clean, clean one as well. They all have to be contiguous, which means that they have to touch and stay within one area. You can't have a district that's kind of, you know, you have one district, and then there's a part of the district embedded into somebody else's district. So it's all gotta stay within one particular area, and that's why I, I'm showing you the Central Unified one, because that's, that's not really a clean map, you know, but, but it serves their purpose, whatever their realities are, okay? So I guess what I'm saying is, you have a blank slate, in, in that regard, okay? So, again, as we look at a public hearing, I want to take data back from the board, the community, et cetera, and, I'm open.
And I, do we have time to have our Citizens Advisory Council look at this, too? Did they? We do not. Well, you have Citizens Advisory Council here tonight?
We can try and call it Special Citizens Advisory Council, but we need input by next Wednesday night.
So, as far as the, next Wednesday night, that, that'll be the first, after next Wednesday night, that'll be the first time we will put maps together for you. You can call as many public hearings as you want, and, and those maps, I might be kicking myself here, but those maps can be redrawn several times, until you find the map that serves the need of the district.
And a question, on the, the map of our district, what is that rectangle up there at the top?
It's not in our district.
Oh, so that's a drawn-out area?
Right.
Okay. What is that?
A section, it's not in the water district.
Oh, okay, okay. Private section?
BLM, yeah?
Yeah.
BLM, right?
I'm not sure of that, I don't think so. I think it's private.
Is it? I don't think so.
I guess the only, there, we do have, I guess, you know, the areas and districts that are, that have their own, like, flavors, kind of, and I would say Copper Mountain Mesa is a district.
Definitely.
That's a fairly clearly divine dis, divine, defined a district.
But it may not be ethnically.
How we?
Would you say it may not be one?
Ethnically.
Ethnically, okay.
But that's kind of the problem here, when you look at our demographics, you know, and of course, I'm sure everyone who's had this, voiced it on them, has, I hope they all protested, righteously so, that no one has tried to defeat the preferred candidate of a protected class. That's just absolutely disgusting thought. I mean, it's happening in other states, and it's, we don't want it to happen here. And I don't see us as having any racially polarized voting, and, but we need to do this. So when it, so if we were to start with one district, which we, Copper Mountain Mesa area, and what we call the Sun Fair neighborhood, but these are like geographic districts that we have, where the topography is different, where the, the density of homes is different. We've got areas up by the park of Monument Manor is one of them, and other areas that, totally different.
Highlands and Friendly Hills?
Yeah, yeah. And, and then, well, there's downtown, I know in Yucca Valley, when they did theirs, they wanted to make sure that, like you said, the ones, in Pasadena, everyone wanted to touch Colorado, well, they wanted to all touch the highway in, in Yucca Valley. So, I don't know, I've done a couple of things out there. Board wanted, or you want, get public opinion?
There isn't a lot of public that's interested to be here.
Mr. Reynolds!
Okay. My first question is to determine the deciding factors involved in the mapping. Understood, we have, we're trying, we're gonna aim for dividing it up five ways, one thousand nine hundred and eight people per district, and so that would be one parameter. Another parameter would be location of the current board members, so we don't map a board member out of his office, is that my understanding?
You won't map him out of an office, you, you might have two, this is a decision you would make, that you, you might decide to have two directors in one district. There, there might be a director that's not interested in running again, a current sitting director that's not. So that's stuff we don't know.
Okay.
I mean, these are all the dynamics that you would have to look at. Or you could just separate, have five districts where the current five sitting directors reside in each district.
What I'd like to do is just get a list of parameters to consider. So we have population, ethnic city, whatever that word is, and then it would be location. What other parameters are there to consider?
Areas of interest.
Areas of interest?
Communities.
Yeah.
Visible boundaries, and planned future growth are kind of two, three things that we haven't kind of, so around the park would be a community of interest?
Mm-hmm.
Whatever we have for downtown would be community of interest?
Well, around the park, there's Joshua Tree Highlands and Monument Manor neighborhoods. I do think that there's some kind of commonality of interest there. The map doesn't show it, but Director Johnson and I both live in the same neighborhood, so that's a challenge if we don't wanna put ourselves.
If you really did a little thumb that stuck out.
Well, well, actually, I, I've given it some thought, and you could, you could go across our neighborhood and, and follow Quell Springs Road, and then give one of us the Highlands, and one of us the Manor, and then work our way down and pick up enough people, you know, to have, you know.
One thousand, what was it, Mike?
One thousand nine hundred and eight.
And you can actually, you can actually kind of do that and still represent the neighborhoods, but then it gets tricky when you get down in the densely populated area, because I think you'd have to divide that out somewhat to achieve your five districts, so we'd have to think about, you know, you have Friendly Hills, and then you have the downtown area, and, and.
You've got up where I live over here, Tom and I live over there, and Al is over off the Sun Fair area, which actually crosses the highway, doesn't it? Because you live on Sun Fair, is that considered the Sun Fair neighborhood that Al calls it?
Pretty much just my house. It could be a district of one.
And goes up to the college.
And then, we, the district would, some, one district would have to go all the way to the college. How do you know how many people live where? How do you divide that?
So, you're at a disadvantage tonight, and I, I noticed that was, as I was speaking. You don't have the census block data on these maps, and so you're talking about, you live in the same neighborhood, we could show you how many people live in each census block, and you could actually divide up your district based on, on, on those data. So you don't have that now. You know, there could be, you talk about things of, you know, topography, and residential density, and, you know, that's gonna clearly show up on, on your draft maps. You'll have that data. So my, my apologies if you don't see that tonight, I'm gonna make a recommendation that in the future that's done, but that, that could help you, I think, in some of your questions.
So like, next week, we could have that?
I can ask them. I don't make promises that I can't keep. I, I learned that, that thing a long time ago.
So is, is one of the goals, then, since Latinos are sixteen percent of the total population, and sixteen percent of the eligible voters, that all five of the districts would have about sixteen percent of the Latino population? Latino voters?
That, that would be ideal.
And, and the Asian-Americans are seven percent of the eligible voters?
You'd wanna have an equal distribution across each five.
So, so if you could go back a couple slides to?
Colorful protected class population.
We gotta find a hundred voters that are Oriental.
Asian.
Asian.
I'm sorry, thanks.
And, right there. And then divide that in five. Maybe. So, if we look at the Latino percent of total CVAP, and sixty-five to seventy-five percent ranges in yellow, which is hard to see, but it's to the southwest of downtown, it's to the east of all, of the, of the Friendly Hills area along Altaloma, and there appears to be a block portion of the way up Quell Springs Road.
So this is where, I have the, I can share, tell you where. You've got a, you've got a block just north of the hospital?
Okay, let me interrupt you, Jeff, because that hospital is not drawn in the correct location.
Okay.
Okay. So north of that depicted hospital?
Yeah. And there's a school on the lower left, the southwest corner.
Yeah, Friendly Hills.
Okay, and then there's a school kind of right on the, on north of sixty-two, northwest?
Up in College.
So there's a, a yellow area there, and then scooting a little more northwest, there's a pink area, and there's another yellow, little yellow section there as well. There's a couple of them just north of that school, a couple of smaller sections, just north of the school, there's a little tiny pink section, I think you can see it, yeah, so.
So my question is, do I get this, do I understand this correctly, that each district, a goal is to have roughly sixteen percent of the Latino population in it?
Well, I don't know about the sixteen percent, I, I just know that you, you should have an equal distribution, so you're not diluting anything in your, in your distribution.
So it could range from twelve to twenty percent in this district?
I, yeah, I don't know. You know, and you're talking strictly Latino, there might be other protected classes that could counter that.
Well, this chart from two thousand and ten shows Asian-Americans at seven percent, and African-Americans at one percent, and I'm assuming there are no other protected classes, because it was highlighted that way, or written up that way. So it's just, I find it confusing if, if there's communities, and there's topography, and there's Highway sixty-two that everybody apparently wants to have a part of, that was a joke. Do you actually draw the districts so that some relatively equal proportion of Latino voters are in each district?
That's my recommendation, but you also have your communities, communities of interest that could, if you can justify those communities of interest in, in the drawing of your maps, at this point, to my knowledge, that you're, you're gonna be fine.
Does Mr. Shankman check these?
I don't know that, ma'am.
If there are one percent of the population in Joshua Tree area that is African-American, that's ten people. Two families, so it's probably maybe three houses. We got some challenges. How are we gonna divide a house in half?
Yeah. You could, you only gotta go to the census block, you can't, you can't really divide it in half.
Yeah, if I can just speak to that a little bit, the rules are, are a little bit difficult to comprehend, as, as we're finding out, right? Basically, the way that it works is that you cannot use race as your predominant factor in drawing any of the districts.
I thought we had to.
I know. I'm just telling you what the rules are, I didn't make the rules.
We cannot.
On the one hand, on the other hand, obviously, the goal of going to district-based voting is to promote more diverse candidates, effectively. So you're in a little bit of a quandary. I can tell you that typically what we try to do is, we listen to you, we figure out how you think your community, even taking away race for one moment, how does your community naturally divide, if it does naturally divide, into five different subsections? That's kind of what we're wanting from you, and then we take that information, you can tell me if I'm wrong.
You're correct.
We give it back to Doug, and then Doug looks at the numbers, Doug Johnson, and who actually is the one who draws all these maps, he looks at the information in terms of population, and he says, okay, well, even if there's this community, Copper Mountain Mesa. Mountain Mesa, there's, you know, say out of 9,000 people, 6,000 people live there. So that can't just be one district on its own. We need to, you know, shuffle that a little bit. And then in doing, once he goes through that analysis, then he'll also try to balance the different ethnicities in each district, to the extent that can be done. And there are gonna be times when that can't be done, and that's just a reality because of the way the, the different ethnic diversities are distributed throughout the community. So the other rule that we have to look at is that, to the extent we can, we have to try to not break up, if there was going to be an area in your community where you would have a, say, a Latino dominant community, where it'd be, you know, more than 50% Latino, we have to try to not break that up. From looking at the map, and I'm not the person who draws the maps, and who does all of the statistical analysis, it doesn't seem to me that we have that in your community. So really, I think probably the best way to focus the conversation tonight, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, is just give us information about how your community divides naturally. Tell, tell us about, you know, schools. Tell us about where people live. I'm writing down notes, and I'm sure you are too, about what you see as your different neighborhoods. I think that's helpful. Are there, are there borders that maybe chop up different neighborhoods? Are there roads that, that kind of cut apart your community? Are there any other natural factors that cut apart the community where it would make sense to have different districts formed there? And so we can kind of take that information back, and then maybe come back to you next meeting with some more specific questions, or more specific areas to look at in terms of how we think it makes the most sense to divide the community into five effectively.
I'm getting a hand waving frantically out there.
I have a question. I have a question based on what is in this packet. And by reading the law that is presented, at least the brief of the law, nowhere does it indicate how often we have to look at redistricting. This costs the district a lot of money. I've been here 40 years, and this place has changed constantly over 40 years. In fact, it's changing quicker now with the influx of many people. So this board is just, why are districts going to go through this process? How often are we...
It's after every census.
Every 10 years.
Every 10 years. This, we're in a little bit of a weird position now, because now we're in 2019, and the new census will be done in 2020. So we'll be looking at adjusting boundaries in 2021, presumably. And, and we're here now because we have this demand letter from Shankman. So it's unfortunate, but yes, every 10 years, after we draw the original districts, every 10 years, the districts will be redrawn. Most from a practical standpoint, that means adjusting a boundary here, or adjusting a boundary here, making one district a little bigger. Typically, it doesn't mean completely redrawn. I'm sure in some communities, that, that might happen.
So what's next?
I have a question if I could. I'm not understanding, on page 25 of our board packet, and I'm not sure if you have the numbered pages, it's the demographic summary page in your handout. And it, we're, we're looking at the population, five divisions, 1,908 residents each, which is the total population approximately of 9,542. And yet we are using Asian-Americans at 7%, which is the citizen voting age population, and that total is 6,737. So up in the top section, where we're dividing the total population, Asian-American is 2%. In the next little subsection of that table, Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, I guess, are 7%, and that's the number that we're citing in our column on the left here. So are we, are we trying to distribute a population of 9,542 or 6,737?
So the 6,737 just means those are people who are 18 and over.
Got it.
That's it. Your, your distribution should be represented of all the humans, and that point, at, at that time was 9,542.
But then wouldn't the information on the left-hand side here, the, the sort of three paragraphs, wouldn't it be then that Asian-Americans are 2% of the population? And, and African-Americans are 3%?
Correct.
But it says 7 and 1 on the side.
Of citizen voting age population. Those are voting age population.
Okay.
So...
I'm confused.
Yeah. So again, the top says total population.
Got it.
Those are humans. Those are humans from birth to whatever.
Got it.
Okay. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna take that number. Of that number, how many of them are voting age population?
So then why would each district have 1,908 people in it? If they're not all voters?
That you're representing all those humans.
You, you, you form the districts based on total population, not total eligible to vote, not total voters.
And why are we using 7% and 1%?
So if you look at where it says 7%, it says Asian-Americans are 7% of eligible voters.
Right.
Not of the population.
So, so in the districts, in the districts with communities and geographic and physical human barriers like 62, we would be looking, maybe secondarily, at districts that were roughly 2% Asian-American, if it can be constructed.
Right.
Based on this initial map, it doesn't look like it can be initially constructed, because, hmm, well, you know, maybe it can. But they, those blocks appear to be, you know, the Joshua, the Copper Mountain Mesa community has, I would be surprised if there's 2% Asian-American out there, although there is a small little rectangular box there. So, so, so it's not primarily driven by ethnicity.
Right.
It's driven by community.
Yeah.
Areas of interest, visible boundaries. So we'd come up with the communities, and then look at, by the way we drew the communities, do we end up with 40% Asian-American when it should really be 2, and then therefore that has to be massaged?
That's right.
All right.
So these are factoids, really, not objectives.
We're gonna have some crazy maps.
Yep. And they run right through the middle of the house.
Yep. You're all gonna, you're all gonna run the shoe, a couple of people's houses.
Yeah, I would think initially, we would wanna break it up by neighborhoods and population to get our numbers. And then make adjustments to pull in more equality, equal distribution of some of the minority groups. It's like you could start with a polygon that gave you, you know, the representative neighborhoods and population, and then you could jut out to grab, say, more Latinos in that district if they were unrepresented there.
Yeah.
That would seem like a fairly straightforward way to approach it.
I mean, is he a map with the streets, and it's up very clearly on here? And, and, and the schools clearly marked including the college. The college is part of that Panorama Heights, which is south, south of the highway, but isn't that what these things call? Panorama Heights? There's a fire department there and stuff?
Yeah.
You, you might even be in Panorama Heights, if there's 200 people soaking wet out there.
Yeah. I gotta, I gotta find another 1,700.
Is there a...
Will there be a recruiting process?
Is there a fire district that mirrors the water district?
No.
So, why the schools? And why the college? Nobody lives at the college. Nobody lives at the school. We have two elementary schools, right?
Yes, yes.
So 60% go to one elementary school, and 40% go to the other, or whatever that percentage is. So, and lots of people that don't even live here attend Copper Mountain Community College. So why, why the, why the demarcation of this, of the two schools?
I don't have that answer.
Okay.
I guess it doesn't say that other public entities have found useful in trying to just come up with a way to come up with these five districts? If it's not helpful for you, it's not required to take into consideration.
Okay. Sounds like there's a lot of room to, to wiggle things together.
Absolutely.
And that's why these maps are really crazy looking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. It's a process, and surprisingly, by the first to make, you will find one.
Yeah.
You will, you will come up with one. One way or another, you will.
Well, I think sometimes communities really do identify by their school districts, but in this case, I don't think it's so much.
Such a small community.
Well, kids from Yucca Valley attend Friendly Hills, though.
Right.
The, the east end of Yucca Valley goes to Friendly Hills. You've just got such a large, empty spot, you know, geography and a tiny demography. And it's just...
Communities, and Sun Fair is another community area, sort of, you know?
It's like that in metropolitan areas as well.
Sun Fair.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So I'm, I'm thinking maybe we, we should, and I think General Manager Sauer alluded to it, give, give you a rough labeling of where all the different neighborhoods are, and that could, and then you've got the major roads. And even without the census block, you can see where there's denser concentrations of population. And our, our densest concentration, even though we're rural, is pretty dense. It's around Highway 62 and Park Avenue, and, you know, I think we're gonna have to take chunks of that and put that in different districts to, to balance the numbers.
Density decreases the further you get away from the highway.
Is there a current aerial map available that we could enlarge and, and then start breaking it up?
I don't know of one.
So we have tools that we can provide. Right. And we, there's a, I'd have to work with your executive director, but yeah, there's, there's ways that you can, there are kits that you, the public could use to draw your own maps, using the, the data sets that are available. There's a GIS where you could...
We can't do that yet.
What's that?
We can't do the maps yet.
Can't do them, though, right.
Yeah.
But there, there, those are available to where you can layer roads and, you know, commercial businesses, all these types of things, school district boundaries, fire boundaries, all those types of things that, that you could see from a, you know, like a Google Earth view.
Right.
And then, you know, expand and decrease.
And did I hear you write that the census block was not available?
On, on this particular map here, it's not on there. You'll, you'll have them in the future.
We will have that for our, our mapping ability, though.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. There'll be, there'll be, you'll see numbers throughout the map, and they represent, you know, the population units from those census blocks. So it'll give you an idea, if you wanna draw, try drawing a map on your own, then you know that, well, I have to have 1,900 or so humans in this particular, and you start adding them up. We have Excel databases that you can use for that, too, so you don't have to do it by hand.
We, we could, if we wanted to look at aerial, like Director Reynolds is suggesting, we could project Google up, Google Earth up here on the screen, and we could pre-label it with the neighborhoods over the top, if you wanted to really get a visual sense of the community and...
That'd be a good way to start. We can look at a giant map, draw circles where we live, and where would our parameters be? You can tell us what the population is, and then we have to expand or contract that to get a, our 1,900 and some odd people. But then we have to look to see who's in there, and then we'll have to adjust the map again. Is that be correct?
I didn't hear the last statement you made.
Okay, the, uh, things running through my head, start with a Google map. We can, you know, because we're the desert, there's areas where it's clearly hardly nobody lives, and then there's areas that are dense. That we can mark out where each director currently lives. From that, we can draw circles and squares and triangles around, we can size, you know, where density is visually. We can give that to you, and you can say, okay, you have 400 people here, you need another 12, 1,300. You have too many people, so now we shrink that, add to here, and then we just keep changing the map.
That's all the process.
So then, once we get to that point, then we have to look to see who's inside of that map. And then we, then we move to a second spot to where we can evenly be diverse on, on the type of people that live there. Am I on the right path?
Yeah. And, and it's not gonna be perfect.
Okay.
You know, especially in what I'm proceeding as a district here, where you have, you know, fairly low Latino population, obviously, of the other protected classes as well. So, but, but your communities of interest are gonna be the really, the telling point. So if you're able to articulate that, my experience has been, you, you've been safe. You find that to be safe. As long as you're not diluting or gerrymandering, where you're putting all protected class in one area, you know, that, that's where you're gonna find yourself in, you know, having to answer some questions.
Okay.
So we need to give them some communities, I guess.
Yeah, I think community locations, and also your map isn't accurate in terms of the, the location of the, where the different directors live, so need to get that.
Also, one of the schools is not in the right location.
So we just need to make some corrections to...
I'm thinking for communities of interest, right up top, you know, the Highlands, Monument Manor, Copper Mountain Mesa, maybe adding it to the Upper Sunburst community, what they call the Avenidas and all that. We had a real catastrophic break that caused the sunburst to go. The Sun Fair community, the Friendly Hills, Panorama Heights, but that leaves out, and then...
Downtown.
Downtown. And, you know, radiating, wow, from downtown. They would have to cross the highway? I don't know. But I, and I can see, you know, Joshua Tree does have these, this kind of demographics, you know? And also, too, like, what is our, you know, the school districts, they, they knew how to divide theirs up. They knew, you know, populations of, what schools were in these, in the Marango Basin, I mean, it's a really big district, and they could do it very well by that. We have like a water complexion. Like, what is our, you know, what is the geographical component to some of these areas that makes them like-minded? Because their, the geography and the water needs, and the infrastructure needs of these, of this, this part of Joshua Tree might be very different from what they might want, you know, in another area, and, and represent a whole different kind of way of thinking, demographic, what they want, you know? So it's...
It's hard.
Yeah, like the Copper Mountain Mesa area may not want any pipeline replacement, because theirs was just put in in 96, 97. And Highlands and Monument Manor may want nothing but pipeline replacement, because theirs were put in in the 60s.
So there's different water complexions, as demographics that I see, and the, the geography, and, and, you know, why people, and why people live in some of these places? Because, you know, they, they want to either be way out, or they wanna be close to things.
More rural, right.
Or they're elderly or poor, and they need to be close to services, so they're down more by the highway, they're living in apartments. We have a few apartment buildings. And it's just...
Kathleen?
Just for what it's worth, when I talk to people, they, because they are either living right downtown, they're on the north side, they're on the south side. They're Copper Mountain Mesa, they're out in the boonies. I don't know. That may be starting point. But that's how people refer to where they live.
I'll take the boonies. I want the boonies.
That, but I'm just saying, that's just... Well, yeah, it's close, probably. That's how they refer to where they're living.
It's like picking a football team.
So if I can make a recommendation, I have a list of about, I would say, eight different neighborhoods that I've heard you guys mention. And then I also heard that at the next meeting, a map with census blocks, maybe the neighborhoods identified that you guys...
Well, the fine streets.
Right? And then roads. I think it might be helpful if we work with Kurt, and we come up with a map along those lines, then it also has accurate depictions of where you guys live. And then hopefully, we can try to find a way to blow it up and make it really big between the three of us. I'm sure we can figure out something.
Put it right there.
Right. And come back to the, at the next meeting.
It's a good start.
Okay.
You gotta start somewhere.
Okay, okay. So if you guys are in agreement with it, and that's okay with you, Kurt?
Yeah, the only question I have is...
We might need some input from you as to where these neighborhoods are located, yeah.
And maybe why they call the area where you live. You're just above down, down below downtown.
It's downtown.
But it's densely populated.
Very densely populated.
It's downtown.
It's in the sewer district.
Yeah, downtown. That's downtown.
There you go. See, this is another part of our water complexion that makes up the Joshua Basin water district.
Well, we start with the communities and the roads and the whatever, and we have all of your addresses.
Yes.
I'm not, but she might.
So we've been taking a little kind of public, but definitely the board and the staff has been questioning. So I'm going to open, officially open public comment here from the public. Gail Austin.
All one of you.
All one of me. Hi, Gail Austin, Joshua Tree resident. And I, the thing I love about this area is the diversity, the fact that old live with young, that hippies live with engineers, and that everybody gets along, and that we are so dynamic. And I feel that if you put it into Monument Manor and Copper Mountain Mesa, that you're now putting all these people that are similar too much together. And I really would strongly suggest that you look at a diversified layout where you break up Monument Manor, where you break up Copper Mountain Mesa. And I don't know if it starts at the downtown with star out, whatever, because of population, but I would love to see it be more, what is it, scattered, where, you know, you're not looking at this ethnicity, and you're not, we want a little bit of everybody in every district. And I think that's the way that you'll, your board will then find parity, when you have people elected from those kind of districts, they're going to care more about the, not their particular district, but the whole basin. And that's what I would look for. Thank you.
You're welcome. And that's sort of what at-large the district has done. We are, we are elected by the, you know, how many voters are out here, the few thousand, handful of voters that are out here, and we're elected, elected district-wide. But for Gail's point, I would say just cut, just make five thin strips from north to south, and that way you have your districts. And you'll have a bit of a tower babble, because someone will have to represent very diverse communities and those community interests. And, and as much as there is, you know, the thought of everyone, you know, oh, scattering, right now, we have that. We're at-large voting, and we, in our last election, there was five people running for two open seats. You had two incumbents, two former directors, and one perennial candidate. And the voters voted an incumbent and a former board member out of five candidates. And from a wide variety of Joshua Tree.
It's a small neighborhood.
It is. So the only, the only way to accomplish that, what Gail is thinking, is just make five strips.
Maybe that's one of the maps.
Let's have a look at it.
Got to start somewhere.
Just north, north, south strips. Boom, 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 boom.
A relatively equal population.
Yep. Tom, you're the public.
Come on, we're dying up here.
He won't be laughing in a minute.
Go ahead.
I have not read any of this material that just popped up today, to my knowledge, but my initial impression was that it's two things. The latter, which I've been disregarding because it's insulting, I've been focused more on our intention to comply with the law, which has been court-tested. So I'm not sure if we're supposed to put an even number of these protected classes in each district, which is diluting their voting power, or if we're supposed to form these districts in a way that they're concentrated, so that they have a greater opportunity to elect somebody that looks like they do. Which is it?
So under the law, you're supposed to look at whether or not there's a possibility of a majority-minority district, so meaning a majority of, say, Latinos. I can't tell you based on that map, but I'm pretty sure it's probably not going to be the case. If you can have a majority-minority district, you're supposed to endeavor to create one. I think that probably what we're looking at here is that you're not going to have one. So then the fallback is to have generally equal population for all of the ethnicities. I don't know that that's going to be happening here, but you definitely cannot use race to dilute votes. I think if we stay on the topic of where your communities are, that we don't fall into that problem, it really keeps us focused on, you know, what five areas really look like for you. I think if we focus on race as predominant factor, that's where we start getting into trouble. So again, my advice would be just on, where are your five communities? If you were to split your district into five subsections, how would that naturally occur? If it's based on common interest, if it's based on geography, you know, whatever else you guys want to consider. I think let us deal with the race component and trying to make the races as equal as we can, and the populations as equal as we can. That's going to be more probably easier task on our end, or really on their end, not my end, because I'm just the lawyer. But they have access to all the statistics and really the tools, the computer tools, that can make that occur much more easily than us looking at and trying to...
I think, you know, there's, this has to be thought through so much, but it would be to make a map on each of the criteria that we have to comply with, and then in a layer, layers, try and fudge each, each one, I don't want to use the term gerrymander, it sounds evil, to try and, in the first place, balance the populations of each district. And the unfriendly part here that I'll say is, is that if you add the criteria of trying to continue with the same set of directors in a map based on where they're living, that's, they have to live in their own district, I assume, that that's going to add, you know, so that we preserve these four or five, that's going to add a layer to this that would make this whole experience impossible, if you tried to do that, too.
They did that in Yucca Valley, it was one of their big criteria, that they protected the incumbents, they flat-out set it.
And that's one of the worst things, that's gerrymandering.
I agree.
When you do that.
I agree. That's cooking the books, ripping the...
Culturally, I don't mean to talk over a director, culturally, that's a no-no.
We're just talking, duh.
To do that. And, you know, how can you, when you have two directors living either in the same neighborhood or on the same street, I mean, what are you going to do to the mapping then, and how's that going to fudge your population requirements, which has some leeway in it, I believe I heard? A few hundred, was it?
10%.
10%? Whatever. So I would, I would, something might have to be sacrificed here, and that could be a director in the next election, which is two years from now.
That's what they did, that little thumb in Yucca Valley. They had it just like this, and then a little thumb stuck out, so the one director lived on this side of the thumb, the other one lived on the other side of the thumb.
Madam President, I'd like to speak to that for a moment.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm one of the directors that would be potentially affected by that, and I agree with your overall point. I think if you, if you took away from the overall intent of this in order to preserve two director's seats, that would not be appropriate. However, I think that there's potentially a way that you could draw the lines in consideration of the individual directors, so they didn't have to go head-to-head and still achieve your objectives. But to me, I would put the objectives first, and I think that's what the consultants, the, you know, what the consultant's challenge is, to determine if that can be done or not. And speaking to Ms. Austin's point, I think that, yeah, it's an interesting thing that this is, this law is attempting to ensure that there's, there's equity, which is a really good thing, but at the same time, it could, in a sense, somewhat polarize a community that right now is very, has great unanimity. So that's an unfortunate maybe byproduct of this. And I think one way you could, the strip method is a possibility, but you could also take a, take a chunk of downtown in each district. And when I say downtown, it's not just downtown, but it's a whole dense population kind of circle around the crossroads of Park Boulevard and Highway 62.
And the strips would do that. They would all, they'd go north to south.
And that would, that would ensure that you had a real good diversity, probably of ethnic groups as well as, as people of different ages and interests and economic backgrounds.
We need to keep in mind that this is a two-year map. In two years, not only are elections potentially can change things, you know, demographics can change, but clearly the census happens, and the map gets readjusted anyway. It's a two-year map.
Just a couple of reminders. One is that there is a window of opportunity to get all of this accomplished before some pretty substantial penalties could be involved, and we're in the window now.
Oh, we have to do it.
Above all, we have to maintain the schedule. Apologies, I didn't introduce myself at the beginning of my talk. I'm Tom Flo and Joshua Tree, Nora.
Anyone else, public comment? Kathleen, do you want to go to the microphone?
I just would like some clarification on, once the districts are drawn, is it that each district has to have someone from it, or, I believe at your last presentation, it was not locked in, maybe three had to be from different districts, and two could be at large, or, I mean, isn't...
I think you're talking about the transition period, so...
Well, that's what I'm asking. Could you clarify that?
So if, going to try to be very careful in how I explain it, because the transition period is kind of complicated to understand. So you guys are going to have three seats in the next election? Okay, so of five total districts, once you draw them out for 2020, the three that are up for election will most likely go to district-based seats, depending on how you decide districts are up. The others remain at-large seats, and then in 2022 are when those seats become district-based seats. There's a lot of moving parts to that and decisions that you can make in terms of what districts you want up, and that's going to affect which seats are at-large or district-based, but that's generally the concept.
What happens if no candidate runs in a district?
If there's no candidate that runs, then you can either appoint somebody, the majority of the board can appoint somebody, or you can...
From that district or at-large?
If, that would be from that, it depends on the seat that's up. If the seat that's up is at-large, it can be from anywhere. If the seat that is up is from a district, then they have to live in that district.
So in 2020...
Or I should say, you can also hold a special election, see if that brings in new characters. Most folks don't want to do that.
So in 2020, only those three districts will be allowed to even vote? Is that correct?
Yes. If we put all three of those up, then yes, there'll be three districts that vote.
Okay.
Well, that clarified.
Do we have our, do we have our marching orders?
Can I close public comment? I think I'm going to close public comment.
So just to clarify real quick, I think the instruction that I received from you was to work with NDC and work with Kurt, come back with, hopefully, an enlarged map for us all to look at. That includes roads, census blocks, and communities that you've identified, hopefully we can label those. I think we can pull that together in a week, and we'll figure out a way to make it done, and that's, we'll see you back here on the 20th.
So are there any more questions by the board?
I would just add that also to the layers that you just mentioned, accurate location of occurrence.
Yes.
Residents as a board member.
Any further discussion by the board?
I think we beat this up pretty good.
Okay. Then the action by the board is, that's a good question, Director Luckman.
Information.
It's just to receive and discuss public input and comment, and I guess the direction we gave to our legal and consultant is to come back, like you said, Jennifer, with that kind of map...
Absolutely.
...that we can see, and then that will be, that will be the meeting then where we more decide on the districts.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, we will not be drawing the maps on the 20th, but I think we'll be able to have a more detailed discussion about where you would like those districts to be. I don't know if you have tools that kind of help go along with that, or if we just use some markers and some pens.
Yes, for example, you know, you gave us some orders, marching orders for next one, next meeting, essentially another public hearing will occur. There might be some things that generate between now and next week in your minds, the public's minds, that we add that into, to the pod, and when we present draft maps, and we keep going.
And then people, the public, they will have a choice, we'll, the public hearing, they'll say, well, here's like three different maps of different, because I've seen these going in the different communities around here, and then another public hearing then to...
You could have community meetings. They don't have to be public hearings. They could have a community meeting, you have these maps on the wall, and people are coming in, and they're making suggestions to us or staff, and that staff brings it back to National Demographics Corporation, we adjust it, and say, you can have 100 maps, I don't want to say that too loudly.
I know.
But you're getting input from folks, and, yeah.
You could have coffee and cookies and maps.
And someone mentioned about, you know, reaching out to the public, again, I don't know the area, but if there's a senior center or something where there's a community gathering place, you're bringing this issue to them, so you're including them, which is really powerful, and giving them a voice, as an example.
And the Vance meeting was what, last night?
And that doesn't have to be a public hearing, it's a community forum or whatever.
Rebecca, I think you started to ask whether an election was required in supporting your decision, and it is not.
Okay, right. Well, then, I think we've conducted a public hearing and checked off all the boxes. Jeff, I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Tilton.
T-I-L-T-O-N?
Correct.
Great. Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you. See you next Wednesday.
Yeah, we'll talk tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because he kept saying "we."
No.
Okay, goodnight.
I don't know.
I don't know either.
Thank you very much.
Drive carefully. Okay. Item seven was an item that we had on last week's meeting, we talked about it, discussed it, we weren't able to vote on it, so we're going to vote on it tonight. The Employee Recognition and Awards Program. Recommendation is that the board approve the Employee Recognition and Awards Program.
I think we voted that we were done with it.
We did vote on it.
Well, and we started to vote, and then we realized we couldn't because it wasn't agendized, that we take action on it.
It needed a budget, I believe.
Yeah, that's...
It was agendaed.
I see.
Well, we're back here.
We're back.
Ready to go.
Yeah, we're back here again. Take it away, Sarah?
No, Kurt.
Kurt.
Okay, so, and Sarah can certainly add to this.
Okay, so, and Sarah can certainly add to this. The recommendation, well, the topic is Employee Recognition and Awards Program, and there currently is no recognition in awards program. Each employee, after a full year, they receive an outstanding evaluation. Depending on whether or not you're in the MSC group or the union group, if you receive an outstanding evaluation, you'll get 2.5%. And if you receive an excellent evaluation, you can get a 5% raise. But that's where you work for the entire year. So a good example of what has gone on in the past is Steve Corbin developed this water reservoir skimmer technique that saves us many acre feet and much staff time, and was selected as the AWWA Employee of the Year, Water Industry Employee of the Year. And so we said, "Good work, Steve." And if there was an awards program, a recognitions program, we would have been able to recognize that. So why doesn't the general manager just do that? Well, because one of my favorite attorneys, Mr. Gill, pointed out that in accordance with Water Code Section, that number, "The general manager shall fix and alter the compensation of employees in assistance, subject to the approval of the Board." So until you approve an employee recognitions and awards program, I can't alter their compensation. I can't give them a day off. I can't give them a gift card for $50, et cetera. So as Sarah has pointed out, a thoughtfully administered Employee Recognition and Awards Program benefits both the organization and the employee. Employees feel valued, morale increases, which aids to the overall reduced employee stress. In turn, the district benefits by increased productivity, improved performance and safety, better quality customer service, reduced absenteeism, and the increased ability to attract and retain talented employees. That's why we have some of the other benefits. So what I'm proposing is for the 2018-19 budget year, the amount would be $2,500. And for the fiscal year 2019-2020 proposed budget that we will bring to the Board in June, that that line item would be $5,000. Doesn't mean that we have to spend $5,000, but it means that we won't go above that $5,000. So the staff is recommending that the Board adopt the Employee Recognition and Awards Program, authorizing the general manager to administer this program. And the Employee Recognition and Awards Program, two pages worth, has performance award categories and special achievement award categories. The first one may or may not have a monetary value, such as a $50 gift card, and the special achievement awards categories would not have a monetary value.
That's not exactly correct.
I have that, that's not exactly correct, and Sarah's now going to correct the general manager.
The entire program has a monetary value of up to $5,000. And these, when this was originally proposed last week, we had separated out with monetary and non-monetary. That was before you had recommended that we have a line item budget, so that when we came back to the table and looked at this, decided to pull those out and use the budget as the guard, rather than saying, what's monetary, what's non-monetary? So for instance, if somebody was to have an anniversary, we could provide potentially a gift card or some sort of award within the parameters of the budget. And if you look over on the procedures, the special achievement category does have a max value of $150, and the performance category could, is subjective depending upon what budget availability is and what the person achieved.
End of report.
I'll give it to the board. Director Hunt?
So I do remember last time, the problem was is that the resolution was in the text but not on the agenda, so that's when we decided to take a back. And then, and also Director Reynolds, you know, wanted to see dollar amounts, which the staff has now included. So I think that we kind of got past the hurdles that were there to prevent us from moving forward on this. And then, lastly, I would just ask the Board for their courtesy if I may to make the motion again, since I made it last time.
Director Reynolds?
Okay. My first question is, was there any reasoning behind the $2,500 this year and the $5,000 next year? What was the rationale behind that?
Well, the $5,000 for a year was a starting figure for a new program, and $2,500 was taking half for a year. We've got three months left, or whatever we have left. So we can make it $5,000 for 2018-19, but I don't think we're going to get that high.
And...
In years going forward, we may come back to the Board and say, this is a really successful program. We need to increase that award, or that authorized amount in each line item, or in each annual budget.
Excellent. Well, I'm excited about this, so don't get me wrong. And the opportunities to give these awards would be at your discretion?
Yes, my final approval.
Okay.
But the supervisors would have the opportunity to recommend employees for such awards.
Excellent.
And my recollection from reading the agenda earlier is that it would go through you and HR, Sarah, right?
So the process is that supervisor can make the recommendation, comes to me, we'll have a form that kind of check the box, and that will go to Kurt or...
Final approval.
For final approval.
Would it be appropriate to give somebody an award, previous, a post-dated award, so to speak?
I think it would be appropriate if we utilized the monies to do some retroactive recognition.
Okay. Jim Corbin is what I have in mind.
Steve Corbin.
I mean, Steve Corbin.
Yeah. Sure. Hopefully, he's not watching on YouTube too much.
All right. Maybe it won't be such a surprise. Okay. Thank you.
Any public comment? Well, then, I'll bring you back to the board. I have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call vote, or just an ayes or an nays?
Sure. Aye.
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 All right. Ayes, ayes. All right. Item number eight, request for staff report on employees' benefits. Recommend the Board advising General Manager to proceed.
Right. So in an effort to become more familiar with financial wherewithal within the district, Director Reynolds has requested a following financial report so he can get up to speed with the two-year absence or whatever, just back on. So he's requested a financial report on all water district employees, full-time, part-time, temporary, and contract. Specifically, I would like to know employee names, job titles, gross pay, average overtime, and bonuses, et cetera. Also, please include a total dollar amount for complete benefit packages. I would imagine the rest of the Board already has this information, but if not, would you please provide the report to them as well? We can certainly do that report, answering the specific questions. However, Article 4.0425 of the Admin Code tells the general manager that "The general manager shall forward all requests by individual directors for the production of a work product, e.g., summaries, reports, and the like, to the Board for the Board's consideration. No such work effort shall be undertaken unless approved by the Board in advance in an open and public meeting." So much of the information requested is available in existing documents such as the 2018-19 Budget, Current Salary Schedule, the MOU, and Resolution 17974. Staff estimates production of this report will take approximately five hours of staff time, and it will include the following: compilation of data from the budget for 1718 or the budget from 1819. Which year do you want to use? Does the Board want to use? Page 13 of the 2018-2019 Budget shows positions by job title, and Pages 4 and 5 show salaries by department. The average overtime is figured over the past year for each operational group, and is included in the salary line item of each department. Production and distribution and average overtime per employee will have to be compiled. The salary schedule, the range of salaries for all positions are available by looking at the salary schedule, but that's the range, right? Individual salaries based on 2019 January salary table would have to be generated. The MOU has the salary information found in Article 17. Performance evaluation information can be found in Article 19. Benefit information can be found in Article 21. Resolution 17974, this resolution describes compensation and benefits for the MSC group. So the benefits overview is, the question we have, I have, is an existing benefit overview is a summary of the MOU and Resolution 17974. Each employee has a health insurance benefit not to exceed $1,800 per month. Some employees, two employees, take less than the $1,800 cap. To the best of my knowledge, there have been no bonuses, but I'm unclear how the Board would wish to define bonuses. If the Board means a step increase within the defined salary range for excellent or outstanding annual evaluations, then that would need to be considered differently than a bonus. If the Board wants individual overtime or other information for each employee, would you want it for the 1718 fiscal year? That's the last actual numbers that we have, as the 2018-19 fiscal year is not over yet. As for overtime, how would the Board want the overtime split out? By standby overtime, end call-out overtime, or total individual overtime? And the California's retirement benefits and the cost of the district for each individual, each individual employee's cost share, our cost, would need to be itemized. So there's quite a bit of work to put that stuff together, which we can do. Now, Sarah and Susan, in preparing for tonight's meeting, brought to me the 2017 report...
Yes.
...which in April of each year, we have to fill this report out for the state.
State Controller's Office.
Okay. It has employee's name, their department, what their job title is, the annual salary minimum, the annual salary maximum, the annual regular pay, the overtime pay, the lump sum pay, other pay...
Yeah, I don't know.
...which might be buyout. I'm not sure what that is. The applicable defined benefit pension formula, 2% at 62 or 2% at 55, depending on which retirement program you're in. The defined benefit plan employer's share, the deferred compensation defined contribution plan, that's the 457?
Yes.
And health, dental, and vision. But this is for 2017, and it's for the calendar year, not the fiscal year, which correlates with our budget. So we're going to be preparing this for the 2018 calendar year in April, but it's not going to correlate to our 1819 budget. And also, for example, our senior administrative assistant in 2017 is now our development coordinator. So he was the senior administrative assistant for part of 2018, and then he became, did he become the development coordinator in 2018 or 2019?
18.
Okay. So he's going to have two different salary lines for the two different positions that he was in. So I guess my question to the Board is, what is it that you want to use this information for? Do you want it by calendar year? To me, doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Budget year? And what are you going to do with it once we prepare it? And, you know, do you want overtime broken out or just lumped? I don't know. There's certain employees, because at least up until recently, didn't have children, that were more willing to be available on standby, so they get a higher proportion of overtime because the folks with families prefer to not work as much overtime or as much standby. So anyway, that's, we can do the report. I'm just needing to know what the Board wants to do with the information. And you want it by 1819, which isn't complete yet? 1718, which is complete? So how can, how can I answer that request?
Well, I'll ask Director Reynolds.
Well, thank you.
Who's all that?
The Director's responsibility is money. We are the budget. So to answer that first question, I am concerned about budgeting the money. I want to know, what do our employees cost individually? What's an employee worth? For instance, we have employee A, we might be recruiting another employee. How much is that job worth? And that's a dollar figure. And as a business owner, I can tell you with the snap of a finger, we have a file in our office, what our employees make and what their benefits are, and so I would be able to know this right away. So I would like to know that for the employees here at the district. When doing negotiating for unions or anyway, the bottom line is, how much do the employees make altogether?
Budget.
And it's a lump sum total is what I'm looking for. Do we do a fiscal year or do we do a budget year? Well, I'm mostly interested in the budget year, and that correlates with our budget. That's the money that this Board provides the district. What other questions can I answer?
So that would be last year's information, last fiscal year.
Right, yeah. It'd be much easier to say what we did than to speculate what we're going to do, but that helps us to determine what each employee, and then total, how much does an employee actually cost the district?
Each employee...
You don't get to do that. That's something the general manager does. You have a budget, and you do it, you have a budget. We do not decide what the individual employee's going to make.
That isn't a Board...
And I have a Board motion.
No, 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 no. You're not understanding my request. I want to know how much they cost. I'm not, I'm not asking to...
You have a budget.
...to decide who gets what. I just want to know, what does it cost? What does an employee cost? That's all. We used to get that report. Joe Gazetta, I remember, he gave us that report, and he brought it to my attention.
No.
And, well, that's my recollection.
With people's names in it?
No, he wasn't a name. It was a job title. He was careful not to say who was the person who held that title, but he did give individual titles, and each one of those titles had a total number. And that number was not just their pay, but it was, well, it was how much did they cost? And that's what I'm interested in.
Not a moment of reports haven't been repaired.
And I know that question's been asked recently by another Director as well, not here, but, and so I'm just reinforcing that.
So...
And so it goes to vote to the Board, so the Board decides, but that's my request.
So a few things. You know, generally, I think Director Reynolds requesting information to get back up to speed is a reasonable thing. What I'm concerned about is getting too far into the minutia, and I'm kind of speaking to the point that Director Luckman's making, that it's you all, it's your job to run the district, it's our job to provide governance. And we, you do bring to us salaries, number of steps, the contracts that we're going to let for approval.
That's five to six weeks.
We approved an organizational plan... We approved an organizational plan, an organizational chart. So, everything that you're doing currently has been reviewed by and approved by the board. So, however, I realize Director Reynolds hasn't been here the past two years, so he hasn't seen all of that. So, my recommendation would be more to provide Director Reynolds with those work products that you've already provided to us as, as a board, you know, like a summary of those, which would include, you know, the, the union contract that was negotiated and we approved, the salaries. I would, I would leave the name of individual employees out of it, I don't think that's that relevant. And, and I, you know, things like overtime, I think it is important for us to gauge how much overtime is being paid, because we want to see if maybe, governance-wise, we have a recommendation to maybe hire more staff, if you're paying a lot of overtime all the time. But, but in terms of each individual's overtime, I think that's a little bit of a bridge too far. So, my recommendation would be more of a summary. And as you pointed out, in this report, a lot of that information is available currently in the budget, and if that could be pulled out, which is reasonable, that I'm available to Director Reynolds, to give him a primer on, you know, what's happened over the past two years, I would be in favor of that, but not going into the minutia.
I can appreciate that. And with the salary, there's a range. I want to know what it costs. I want to know, I want to know what it costs. It's a matter of transparency, and I think a board member should have that information available to them. That's, I stand with my request.
If I, if I may.
Sure.
The state controller's report is really close to what you're asking for.
Okay.
It does, if you go by each line, it shows you the job title, it shows you the range, but it also shows you what the pay was for the year, what the overtime was for the year, what the benefits cost for the year. And that, I think, is the closest thing that you can be given that meets your request. And, you know, we can summarize some of these things. Of course, you know, ultimately, it's up to you guys what you want to do, but I think it's a, it's a really great tool, and it's a tool that the state has developed, so that we're comparing apples to apples. Every agency has to provide this exact type of report with the same criteria, so you'll see the columns on there are developed by the state controller.
That could very well be it, and that could very well be the same report that the previous general manager showed me.
I think so, it wasn't required back then.
It wasn't?
It's only been a few years.
Okay.
Actually, this is a transparent, I'm sorry, this is the report on special districts, the government compensation in California report. There's a link on our website to this report, so our customers can look at it, the board members can look at it. Special districts, cities, all sorts of different types of governmental entities. There are, for 2017, there's 3,063 special districts that reported. And then there are some interesting tools there. So, you can look at averages, so you can see how our district compares to other special districts in the, in the state, and, and you would be pleased, I think, with those, the results that you see there. So, there's some, you know, modest tools, but this, you know, this is available, and it's on our website, and, you know, it's been out there for, I don't know, five years, maybe now, something like that.
And you're talking about the report that Sarah was...
That we're talking about, yeah, that we have to prepare for the state at each year. This is a requirement.
And I'm thinking, Director Reynolds, even though it's for the calendar year, it should, you know, give you some sense of, of, you know, what, what's being put out by individual position for, you know, salaries and overtime.
And we're getting ready to do the 2018 one here in about the next five weeks. It's due by the 30th of April, so it'll be complete by then for sure, and submitted to the state, so it'll be available for everybody at that point.
And we'll be looking at the budget soon, and a lot of stuff about salaries.
Oh, yeah.
And money is in there.
There's a lot of information in there about salaries and benefits.
From what I've seen so far, it's been vague, and it's kind of hard to grab the, what's a total number? That's, you know...
It's right in there.
That's what I would like to see.
There's one page that's total salaries.
And if it's right in there, well, the work's already done. That's what I want to see.
You want a total number for all staff, like in one bucket? Is that what you want?
I'd like to know what individually.
I think it's intrusive, I'm sorry.
I think it's a matter of transparency.
And that's, we're not, my, with us, we're not supposed to do that, that's not our job as, as a governing board, to get that involved in employee matters, it just isn't. We, we'll have, we'll have unions to negotiate this year, I think.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll be getting into a lot of this stuff.
And that's information that will go into the, the key for that, too?
We'll have, we'll have a lot of information, you know, why we have to, because we will have some of those employees' names in this, it's, can't get away from that. But I, this is just not, it's, it's, it's very invasive, and I, employees' names, my gosh, I just don't, and wanting to know there's, there's bonuses, average overtime, I mean, I could, that's a manager's job. That's Kurt's job.
So, since that's a publicly available document that's already on our website, if, what would you think? I'm just asking Director Reynolds and the rest of the board, if you were able to obtain that, plus some of the information that is already available, that the staff could call out for you to, in response to your other questions, you know, would you, would you be satisfied with that? Because I do have a concern both about how far we drill down, because our job is governance, and then I also have concern about staff time. If we made requests like this routinely, it would burn up a lot of staff time that could be used for other purposes. Now, I recognize that this is a little bit exceptional, but it could be off the board for a few years, and I want to be responsive to requests, but I'd like to strike a balance here between, you know, you're getting the information you need, and staff having to do a lot of work, and us maybe going a little farther down the path of, you know, from governance to management, which is strictly up to these folks to do.
Might I suggest that this report prepared for 2018 calendar year in April would address most of that, and as we go into the budget cycle, we're actually starting on the budget this month, with the intent of bringing it to the board, two meetings in June, and to the Finance Committee and the Water Operations Committee, that we produce this report in April, but recognize that it's a calendar year, and, and we can meet with individual or up to two board members to discuss the budget, if you want to.
It's only two.
No more than two.
I'm acceptable to that.
Okay.
Can I request President Johnson for that, to join me? He's not here to say yes or no.
Man made in heaven.
But, he's made that same request I have.
Request would be made to the chair.
Okay.
That, that would be fine.
Okay.
And, any comments from the public? Or Gail?
Thank you, Gail Austin, Joshua Tree. All of the board members put in a lot of their own time, reading reports, researching information, writing reports. We realize, as ratepayers, that that's part of what their job is. I know that you guys all probably have a different definition of what your job is, and we hear that at times, about what different people think. But you have to answer to the ratepayers, and reports that could take five to 10 hours of staff time, I don't want to see customers paying for that. I want to see you guys researching your own. If the facts are available, then research it. If I want to know, I have to research it. And I apologize, Dr. Director Reynolds, but I don't think wanting it, wanting to know is a good enough reason for the customers to pay for this report. Now, if you can come up with something concrete to benefit Joshua Basin Water District, then I would be all for it. But just because you want to know, I think that that would set a precedence where any director could say, well, I want to know this, or I want to know that. You know, how many miles did you put on that tractor? And I think that that's where you don't belong. And I apologize, but that's how I feel. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Then I'll bring them back to the board. So, the, what we can do is to have Director Reynolds meet with President Johnson and the general manager.
Let me stop.
At staff. Go over the, the report that's coming out in April that has to be sent to the state controller's office. And that, that would be, so then, this still has to come to a vote for the board, right? We have to approve it, because it's, it's part of the, our administration code, is that the general manager for all these kinds of requests for production of work to the board for the board's consideration, no such work effort shall be undertaken unless approved by the board in advance in open and public meetings.
The report that we're talking about for the state controller is something that Joshua Basin Water District has to do every single year in the normal course of business. So, this is not an extra report that's being prepared for Director Reynolds.
Who prepares the report in this department?
The accountant.
You should know that.
So, that's...
I knew that.
Yeah, so...
So, the, the protocol here, Director Reynolds made a motion, it failed for lack of a second. Gary made a motion, it failed for lack of a second.
Oh, we didn't even bring it to a motion, I don't think.
No, you're going to appoint an ad hoc committee for Michael and Robert to work with staff when they formulate the budget.
Well, what if other board members also want that?
Then you're, then it has to come back to the whole board.
On separate meetings.
I like the idea of forming a committee.
That's what I thought you had planned.
And, and then between, between the committee visiting with the staff shortly, we could come up with a plan, and then bring it back to the board to vote on.
A committee for what?
The finance committee.
Yeah.
I think, I think what Director Reynolds is suggesting, what it's, is a, is a budget committee. Is that right, Michael?
Outside of the finance committee?
You got a finance committee.
Well, you can leave the finance committee. That's, that sounds like, that sounds like the appropriate slot to slide, slide that in. Michael suggested an independent committee.
That'd be amicable that you...
But that's not on the agenda tonight. That's something for the chair to consider and entertain.
I think what Director Reynolds is suggesting is that we brief him using the 2018 calendar year printout, and the budget, which is not individual employees, it's, you know, the production department, the distribution department, the accounting, human resources. And those two reports, I think can answer his question. I don't think you need an ad hoc committee, I don't think, you know, what I'm hearing Director Reynolds say is he'd like, if Bob's interested, assuming he can, if Bob's interested, we can do two, but if...
What's the meaning?
It's just a meeting of two board members, and if...
And they don't need board, you just don't need board approval for that?
No, that's important to note in the minute. This is out of board directive, this is the individual endeavor with, conjunctive Robert.
So, we had, we had a...
I think that would be awesome. I like it.
Item eight was just to recommend that the board advise the general manager how to, on how to proceed.
We did that.
I would consider that advisement on how to proceed.
Yeah, I think, I think we came to consensus, you know, that we talked it over.
The board of general, you can do that.
To the resolution.
Is that, is that acceptable, Mike?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
It'll be a test to see how much...
And just to clarify, it's, it's a briefing, it's not development of the budget, the budget should be developed by staff for presentation and the finance committee and the board.
Very good. Okay, all right.
And that could be a good tool for our budgets as well. It could be good things, too. Thank you.
At this time, the board will go into closed session pursuant to government, government code section 54957, Section 3, Section 2, general manager performance evaluation, and pursuant to government code 54957 dot six, to consult with the board's designated representatives, ad hoc negotiation committee, President Johnson, he is not here tonight, and Vice President Underwood, with regard to potential compensation adjustments and potential extension of the general manager's employment agreement at 8:00.